I'd like to call this meeting to order. Bloomfield Town Planning and Zoning Commission, it's 7:07, Thursday, August 22, 2024. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for May 9, 2024. Your motion? It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Additions, corrections? Okay, he has his hand up.
Yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I submitted a couple of corrections. I just want to make sure they're included in the, in the minutes.
Yes, they were. Thank you.
Great, great, thank you.
All those in favor of approving amendments signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, abstentions?
Abstain.
Two abstentions, Commissioner Bolt and Commissioner Mallett.
Mr. Peters.
Peters. Okay, two abstentions. Any, any noes? Okay, motion carries. First item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's an extension. Linda, you have the legal notice.
It's been read before on the record.
Okay. It's a continuation of 140, 142 Steel Road Proposed Zoning Map Amendment with related master plan from an R40 zone to a PLR zone per Section 5.4.G.1 of Bloomfield zoning regulations for proposed 28-unit multifamily townhouse style development with 85 total parking spaces. Applicant is Techna Ventures LLC, property owner, bottom of the ninth LLC.
And as revised. And as revised, the application.
Okay, with the revision. Okay, before we reopen this public hearing, I'd just like to go over how we proceed in our public hearing. We first hear a presentation from the applicant. We then hear comments from the director. We'll take questions from the audience. We'll then have questions from the commission. We'll have comments from the audience. We'll then take comments from the commission. And then the applicant will have one last chance to make any closing remarks. I also want to indicate on this particular application that there was a petition filed, which the petition, the names on the petition has been verified, which means that this application would require a supermajority for approval, which means that we would need five commissioners to approve this application. With that said, who's here for the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Gregory Piatzou. I'm an attorney from Farmington. I represent the applicant. I am joined tonight by Lori Donadio from Quinzenberry Architects. I'm also joined remotely by two engineers from Soli Engineering. Kevin Soli is with us remotely. He was the primary presenter two months ago when we were before you. I'm also joined by Luke Morrow. Couple introductory comments that I'll get to in a moment before I turn it over to them. But I do believe Luke is going to be, has a PowerPoint, so if we could possibly make him a presenter, that would be helpful. Before turning it over to Kevin and Luke, I just want to touch procedurally on what's before the commission tonight. We're not here on a site plan application. We're not here on a special permit application. We're not here on a wetlands application. We're here simply on a zone change application. It's the first step in a multi-step procedure. As I believe the town planner indicated when we began the public hearing two months ago, the inquiry is primarily focused tonight on the issues of density. There will be a time to deal with the fact that there's some wetlands on site in an upland review area. I'm sure that the inland wetlands commission is going to focus on that. The staff will focus on that. There will be an opportunity for a public hearing on that. But that is, it's a commission that deals with the inland wetlands issues. We're obviously going to need permits for regulated activities, and that will be dealt with in due course. If we get approvals from the inland wetlands commission, we then come back here. And you're going to have another opportunity to dig into the details, whether that be landscaping, stormwater management, precise roadway design or the home layout. Again, that will all come back to the commission, the site plan and/or a special permit review, possibly with yet another public hearing. So I just want to reemphasize procedurally, we're not here to cover all these bases. The question presented tonight is, do we get to start forward in this process? And as part of that process, you'll see tonight that just this process has refined the project. When we were initially here before you, you had a 28-unit plan. We've submitted a revised plan that has reduced that significantly. I don't mean to steal Luke and Kevin's thunder, but we are now before you with a 16-unit plan. So we sharpened the pencil and we sharpened it again. And we've come back to you with the best number that we can do, which is the lowest number that we can do, which is the 16 units. We'll go over that revised plan. We think it's addressed a lot of the concerns that were raised by the neighbors. But again, I just want to emphasize that the simple issue here is, is there's going to be a zone change, and what is the appropriate density level? All these other issues and concerns, which have tangentially been addressed, really are to be focused on down the road as part of those additional hearings. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Luke and to Kevin.
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Soli. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Soli Engineering, offices located at 993 Farmington Avenue in West Hartford. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present remotely. I apologize if I couldn't be there with you in person. I just had another commitment in another jurisdiction, but I'm glad to be here remotely. Luke Morrow from my office, I believe, is also in the, an attendee, but I think he might, I don't think he's been promoted to presenter yet. He did have a presentation. I was hoping he could pull up and share, if you could promote him to presenter. I believe he may have also emailed the presentation to staff, so I'm not sure if staff would be able to pull it up, but Luke's certainly ready to, to pull that up, just so we can kind of talk through some pictures of what we've proposed and the substantive improvements we've made from our last hearing. Excellent. Thank you, Luke. So, just to, you know, remind everyone, we're obviously here tonight to talk about a potential zone change for a property on Still Road. And the plan on the screen before you is what we discussed at the last hearing. Our initial application had proposed a total proposed number of units of 28 units. This resulted in a density of, that was slightly higher than our development to our east. And, you know, we heard a lot of concerns from staff and from the commission regarding the density. So what we did is we went back and took a hard look at how we could refine this, how we could better match, you know, density for the, for the developments that surround us. And what we proposed, I'll look if you'll change slides. What we're proposing now is a far reduced density. What we're proposing is 16 units. They'll all be housed in duplexes. So this actually brings our density down to, I believe, 1.67 units per acre, which is actually less than the 1.7 units per acre at the Still Mountain Estates to our, to our east, our plan right on the screen. And as you can see here, even with this layout, you know, we heard a lot of concerns regarding the separation of the buildings from Still Road. So we pulled those considerably further back off the road. We're approximately 130 feet from the property line. And you can see we're fully behind, you know, the residents to our west and also considerably further away from Still Road for the closest house on Still Mountain Estates to our east. So this plan results with a total of 16 units. You know, we've provided and demonstrated some of our extensive landscape screening we can provide to ensure that we will not have any, you know, visual impacts or aesthetic impacts to any of our neighbors. You know, one of the other components regarding this, you know, regarding this development is, we discussed at the last hearing, potential trip generation, traffic generation, which may come from a development like this. With the development of this size, with only a total of 16 units, this development would only generate a total of eight trips in the morning peak hour, so two cars entering. That's one every 30 minutes, two in an hour, and six cars leaving the facility. So that's one car essentially every 10 minutes. In the PM afternoon peak hour, that peak hour rush hour between 4:00 and 6:00 PM, you would generate a total of nine trips. So that's only five cars entering and four cars exiting. So again, in either direction, we're talking less than a car every 10 minutes. And, you know, as a professional traffic, professional traffic operations engineer, which is an additional designation I hold, I can attest that this project would not have an adverse impact on the area roadway network. I know at some of the last hearings, there was discussion regarding the eligibility for this site to be, to be, to even have this zone. And obviously, we're simply proposing to, to match the same zone that exists to our east. And one of the things, if you go to the next slide, I'll actually go forward, Luke, to slide five. You know, we did provide a figure and we discussed this at the last hearing. The Department of Transportation does establish Still Road to be a collector road. It's designated as a minor collector from a functional classification code with the DOT. Additionally, on the next slide, we wanted also identify that Still Road actually is in the town of West Hartford. The town of West Hartford and their P O C D also identifies this road as a collector. So I just, you know, from a point of clarification standpoint, you know, we do believe that this site is more than eligible to be proposed the zone. Obviously, the development to our east is this zone. So we feel that what we're requesting is, you know, is appropriate, you know, in accordance with all the zoning regulations and things like that. So, so I, you know, we do also have, because we did hear a lot of the comments from the last meeting, we also provided some additional updated and upgraded architectural elevations. And here are just some renderings, which kind of depict how we've been able to incorporate some stone at the base of the buildings, add additional gables to the structures, just to make sure that we have something that does provide a lot of architectural interest. And we do think this is very complimentary and consistent with the surrounding, you know, the surrounding developments with Still Mountain Estates to our east and some of the other developments that have gone through a similar process. You know, with that, again, I think, as I know I stated at the last hearing, as we go through these developments and these applications, I always feel that any comments that we receive from staff, the commission or the public, allows our application to get better. And I feel that what we have before the commission today, with a far less dense development, reducing the units from, from 28 down to 16, which is a substantial reduction, you know, we do feel that we've, you know, we hope that we've satisfied the, the comments and the concerns raised. And we do think this would be a tremendous development that could really be, you know, a great, a great opportunity to redevelop this piece and to provide some additional housing options and housing choice options for the residents of Bloomfield. And with that, I guess I'll pass it, you know, if the commission has any questions regarding the architecturals, as Attorney Piatzou indicated, we do have a representative from QA and M Architecture. Attorney Piatzou is here as well to answer any other questions that the commission may have. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have at this time. And we thank you very much for your consideration.
Want to say for the record that the YouTube live channel is not, there's a technical problem with it, but only register and view the hearing that way.
Okay.
Okay. And a copy of recording will be on the website tomorrow. If they wanted to view it live, well, obviously not live, but if they wanted a full recording, it will be posted. Thank you.
I just wanted to, I wanted to follow up with what Kevin was talking about with regard to the eligibility in the zone. We certainly feel that we meet all the criteria. We understand that the one that was brought up at the public hearing two months ago dealt with whether or not we were on an arterial or collector road. As was observed, Still Road is within West Hartford, not within Bloomfield. Those are two points. Obviously, town of Bloomfield and its planning and zoning commission don't have the authority to designate one way or the other streets in other towns. So looking towards Bloomfield's P O C D is not particularly instructive. But what we think is controlling is the fact that the DOT has designated Still Road as, as a, as a collector road. So we think that that kind of opens and encloses the matter. Well, I should also add that the town of West Hartford does not have a map the way that Bloomfield does in terms of its arterial and collector roads. However, it does, and the narrative that we put up, does reference mountain road being an arterial road. So we are certainly on a DOT designated collector road and within the requisite footage of what the, at least the town of West Hartford has designated as to be an arterial road. So from our perspective, we do meet the requirements and the prerequisites for the rezoning, and there's no basis to deny us on a technical issue like that. Thank you.
Okay, Jonathan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did distribute some addendums to prior staff comments, and I will not go through all of them. At this point, I will summarize where the staff is at this point. Again, clarify that, as the applicant indicated, this is a deliberation this evening on the appropriateness of a proposed zone map change from R40 to PLR. The staff appreciates the efforts that the applicant has made to respond to comments both by the commission and staff regarding density and layout. But when all is said and done, it's the conclusion of the staff that we do not find a compelling reason to change this zone at this time. That the plan of conservation and development continues to hold it as rural and low density. The surrounding property is a mix of both a neighboring PLR, but also neighboring single family. And we think on due consideration, when all is said and done, that it's appropriate to maintain the zoning for this property as it presently is. So our recommendation is to, would be to maintain the R40 designation.
Thank you. At this time, we'll take questions from the audience. Is there anyone that have any questions? If you do, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Okay. We'll take questions from the commission. There's no questions from the audience. We'll start with Commissioner James. You have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess it's for the staff. If this application, if this area was not PLR and it was just R40, could such a development be built?
No, it could not. It needs for a single family. They could not get the density they're proposing under the R40 zone with the, with the wetlands that exist on the property.
So, just considering the purpose of the PLR, which is to provide a limited range of multifamily housing types, and keeping in mind our P O C D, which is to diversify our housing stock. We need, we're in a housing crisis. We need more housing units. Like, can you give more context on why we should not change this area?
We do not think, when all is said and done, on balance, that, that this development is appropriate and reflects the intent of the P O C D for this particular area. There are other opportunities throughout the community for PLRs. And we are in fact in conversations with prospective applicants to provide a variety of housing types throughout the community. But on balance, we feel, in our judgment, that this particular site is not an appropriate site for a change from R40.
And can you give context as to why there's a site just to the west that's a PLR and that is more dense? How is that more appropriate than this site here?
That was not done on my watch, and that was done by a different commission, and they had made their decision at that time.
That's all for questions. Thank you.
Excuse me. Before we go to Commissioner Mallett, Commissioner Goff, is you and Ola on?
Yes, I'm, Ola's on too, or was a minute ago.
Okay, Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Goff, we'll go with you for questions. Any questions?
Yeah, I want to, I guess I, I, I want to continue a little bit with what Commissioner James brought up, because I would like to know, you know, we seem to have gone to the PLR model instead of subdividing properties. A question through you, Mr. Chair, to the planner. If we were to subdivide this, how many lots would be available, you know, from a subdivision of this property?
Commissioner, I can't answer that at this question. We'd have to do an actual layout. There's a significant amount of wetlands on this, on this property that would significantly restrict the ability to do, you know, a significant side subdivision. Obviously, we, you could get, you know, just looking at it, you can probably get two to three in the front area. But, you know, you've got a significant wetland to cross to get to the rear end of, rear side of the property. We'd have to sit down with the wetlands agent to give you a, a more specific answer to that question.
Okay. And that's, you know, your, your answer is pretty consistent with what, looking at, looking at the map, I would think. But thank you for that. I guess I would also like to ask a question to, to try to clear up this issue of the regulation relative to the arterial and collector. I understand that the designations in, in Bloomfield's P O C D may be outdated. And I, I don't know, in terms of controlling Still Road, I know at the, I guess, the western end where the houses on one side are on West Hartford and the houses on the other side are in Bloomfield, down to the eastern end where it's all West Hartford. I don't know who is the controlling entity on the road in terms of road maintenance and that kind of thing. But I would assume that the designations on these are not, you know, they are DOT designations, I guess. So it doesn't depend on which town is actually determining what they are. So has, has town staff established whether the, you know, what, what kind of road this is currently designated and if it meets the requirements?
I think Commissioner, the, the town, the road is under the control of the town of West Hartford from end to end.
Okay.
They, they maintain it, and it's within, it's within their, technically within their boundaries. The Bloomfield edge is on the, is on the northern edge of the road is where the town starts. It isn't even down the middle of the road.
Okay.
The entire road is. The designation of our, you know, changes over time in terms of uses. West Hartford has designated this as an arterial. And I think that, you know, in terms, you know, my, my layman's observation in terms of usage, is it probably is functioning as an arterial. Where, while our, you know, our existing P O C D, which is now 12 years old, when it was, when it was done, there was probably a lot less traffic on this road at that time. And I'm not sure we even designated the road per se, since it's not within our community.
Okay. And I guess my final, my final question, and may, you know, this to you, Mr. Chair. At some point, are we going to hear from the, the attorney for the folks that are contesting this? Because I do have a question similar to Commissioner James in terms of, one of the arguments for this, for, one of the arguments for denying the, the change is that this is sort of a single-family residential neighborhood. And I think it's, it's more mixed than that. And I guess I would like to know, one of the things I would like to hear from is why the people that live in the Still Mountain Estates PLR would find this objectionable. I certainly understand why other, the people in the single-family homes might. I don't know if, when, I don't know who the proper person to address that question to is.
Commissioner, I am aware that the, that the residents petitioners do have an attorney present who will be making a, making comments in a presentation at the appropriate time.
Okay, so, so perhaps I can, I can ask, I can ask that, that question at, at that time. I think that's, I think, I think that's all I would like to ask now. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Ola, if you're on, do you have any questions? Okay, we'll come back to Commissioner Mallett.
I don't have any further questions on the zone change.
Thank you. Commissioner Bolton?
I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Peters?
I don't, I also don't have any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Neely? Marshall Neely?
Thank you. I do not have any questions right now.
And Commissioner Blint?
Yes, I have one question. Would the applicant consider a single-family housing on the site?
The applicant's response to that is similar to what I said at the outset. I think the issue here tonight is density. These are shown as duplexes. If what the commission is asking is to take these 16 homes and, rather than having a demising wall between the two of them, space them out, I mean, that's something that we could deal with at the site plan and the special permit phase of this. So it's certainly something we would consider. But I just want to come back to my primary comments at the beginning, which is, the chief question here is the density. So we would consider 16 single-family homes as we get down to that. But, but as of...
Okay, please, you'll have a chance to comment.
But again, I think that's a question that goes more towards site layout rather than the issue of density. Thank you.
And I don't have any questions for this. So we'll go with comments.
Actually, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can, can I ask one, one additional question?
Sure.
So, just as I was thinking about this, and I think we went through this a little bit with one of the other applications recently. You know, the applicant, it makes, makes it very clear that this is, you know, the zone change would be the first phase in this, and then there would be wetlands approvals, et cetera. One of the things that, you know, one of the things, I guess, is, as a question relative to ultimate action on this item, is that can this be conditionally approved? In other words, can you make a zone change like this conditional on getting through the rest of the process? Because, you know, if it's discovered that wetlands ultimately, this can't work, are you left with a property where you've changed the zone to the PLR zone, but now you can't do this development? How does it get back to R40, or does it, I mean, I don't think it does, or can you make it conditionally? So I guess, I guess that's a question perhaps for the planner, just so that we know, you know, where this can go, because it, you know, per, per the applicant, there are lots of steps left before what we see in the diagram. You know, if we do approve the zone change, there are lots of steps. before what we see in the diagram, you know, if we do approve the zone change, there are lots of steps that would need to happen before this could ever become a reality. So I guess I ask that to the planner.
Commissioner, we, to the best of my knowledge, we cannot make it a conditional approval when we're doing a zone map change. We either change the map or we don't. And we don't make it conditional on the next steps. I mean, one, another alternative that could happen is we change the zone and they decide not to go forward with the development. For whatever reason, we still will have changed the zone. The presumption is that the zone is appropriate and that the development will follow and that both the wetlands and, and this commission will consider the specific site plan for that process. And at that point, you can, you can further impact the design, the location, the layout, and even the density. You're basically setting a maximum density at this point. But you cannot, as far as I know, Commissioner, make a zone map change conditional on a development going forward or whatnot. You, as the commission, always have the right to implement a proposed zone map amendment on your own. And theoretically, I'm not recommending that in this particular instance or whatnot, but theoretically, if this is approved and either it does not pass the following steps or they decide not to go forward, you could, as the commission, recommend rezoning it back to R40 to be compatible as it was before you changed it.
Great. Thank you for that answer and thank you for letting me ask that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, before we get into the comments section, I'm going to allow the applicant attorney to make his presentation.
I need my helper here to put the, the... Move this up here. Mechanically challenged. Yeah, it's good. Although the commission can see it, but the public computer will see it. Maybe you should put it back a little bit. Yeah, I'm going to do it as soon, as soon as, yeah, that's good. Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, if we're seeing something at the podium, can we quit sharing screens so that we can see the full? Thank you.
One housekeeping question, did you put my presentation? Did you put the presentation up? I'm sorry? Do you want me to wait until, so everybody can follow along or?
Her laptop died. I'm going to go get mine. If you want to not do him, you want to do the residence.
Comments?
Or, or take a five-minute recess.
Let's do a recess before we get into that. Chair is going to take a five-minute recess. It is currently 7:40. We will resume at 7:45. Thank you.
Laurie, how you doing?
Good to see you.
Yeah. Thank you.
We will resume this meeting at 7:45. We were in the process of having a presentation from the residence attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Attorney Thomas Fahey. I'm with the firm of Fahey, Land, Delina and Attorneys in town of Windsor Locks. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the Camerons and the Straits and, and the Camerons live here at 152, 154, and the Straits live here, which is 162. And I want to, I do not represent Still, Still Manor, Still Mountain Estates, just so the record's clear. And are you going to put the first? I don't know how you want, if you have my stuff in there, you could, because there's a bunch of maps and stuff I have in there that, yeah.
I'm not sure where some of the references, so it'll probably look like a page that you ordered that you submitted to us whenever you were referencing.
Yeah, I can give you, I can give you what I have and you can have it. Do you have, did you?
If you could just reference what page or which order that you submitted and I can...
Yeah, I don't, I don't have page numbers on it, so I have, I'll give you the title if you want. Hang on a second. As we've heard, the, the property that's the subject of the zone change is in an R40 zone, a residential zone. And the, as, if you look at the zoning regulations, you'll see that the purpose of residential zones are to retain the rural character of the town. That's section 3.1. And here, the use as a single-family dwelling is an as-of-right use in the residential zones. They also allow special permit accessory dwellings and affordable housing for voluntary municipal firefighters. It also has a rear lot provision that provides alternative housing, another way of getting more density in a single-family one-acre zone. But that's pursuant to a, a special permit. And the approval criteria for that is that the commission has to determine that the development of the rear lot will provide the most appropriate use of the land considering the preservation of the natural characteristics of the land. And more importantly, if the commission in its sole judgment finds that the established development pattern of the neighborhood will be damaged by the development of a rear lot, it may deny the application for a rear lot. Now, I bring that up because that's similar to what the commission is doing and considering. When it's considering a change of zone application. And the, the commission acts in a legislative capacity when they're doing changes of zones. It's a tremendous, has a tremendous amount of discretion. And it is, it has the right to determine, and it must determine, that the property that's being asked to have the zone change, that, that is suitable for the zone change, that the property itself, before you get to density, I know there's a lot of talk about density as the primary thing you're doing or setting density. But if that's the only thing you do, you're not really doing what the commission is supposed to do in terms of determining first whether the property, the characteristics of the property, its location. And especially since your commissioners live in the town, they're familiar with it, they're familiar with the traffic, they're familiar with the site and its size and whatnot. And it has to make that decision whether this is suitable for the change of zone. And as you'll see, this zone in your, in the future use plan is not cited for being anything other than low-density rural property. It is not, and I'll show you the exhibit as we get to it. It is not considered one of the areas that they're really focusing on getting more changes of zone. And, and that's in the density schedule that we're seeing here. And, and now, and there's a map here, the town zoning map is, there we go. Okay. If you look at that, and I don't think, I don't know whether this part is going to work on that from here. We'll give it a try. But if you look at the lower, lower left corner of the map, and this is an exhibit that was actually supplied by the, in the applicant's initial application package. It says project area and it's got the, across the, there you go, the, it's, it's got the diagonal lines in it. That's this property here. And if you look to the, to the, to the right, you're going to see, that's, that's where Benton Drive and those thousands, that's the project, Still Mountain Estates. And to the left, you're going to see, and you're going to see where it says 171 units. That's another PLR. That's Bellbury. To the north, it's marked PLR. That's, that's the Watkins and Overbrook that you did recently. That's got 34 units. There's 45 units at, at Still Mountain Estates and 171. And that's, now, this is all in this little quadrant of Still Mountain here. That's over 200 units, almost, okay, just for this, there's 200, 200 units. It's just been in a small little section of Bloomfield that have been accounted for since this zoning map, which was, I think, zoning map was dated in 2015. Now, the PLR zone was established to provide a limited range, right, that's what it says right in there. A limited range of multifamily housing types to carry out the policies established in the plan of development and special, and, and the special, and the studies that were done over the years to determine why they needed this zone. And it's been used very successfully over a number of years. And one of the things, and I think John Coleman mentioned it earlier, and that is that once you, once you create a PLR, once you change the zone, there is no obligation for the developer to proceed with it, to build the houses. You may want to sell it to another investor, but the zone stays in place. And that's a big thing. And, and when you have, when you change the zone of a property, it stays there. And so the project that you see may never get built. Now, obviously, if they want to change it to another zone, they have to come back and see it again. But the, the real question here is, does this one, really the last parcel on Still Road, does it really need to be changed? What's wrong with it staying as a, as a R40 lot? We all know that it's, and it's going to, it has some constraints to it. And we know that you're going to, that anything further with this project, if you were to approve the zone, would have to go to the Wetlands Commission. But, but the point we're trying to make here is, there's no need to do that. Okay? It's, has this Still Road section satisfied its obligation in terms of contributing to the different types of housing? And keep in mind, this is only one. I think there's 15 or 16 zones in the town of Bloomfield. Several of them allow residential housing. There's a separate multifamily zone for housing. But this particular PLR zone has been used extensively. There are, and I'll, I'm going to go through here and you're going to see some of the other additions. Now, there's a map in here that has, that shaded, there's eight PLRs in, since this map, this only goes back to 250, 2000, this 2000, I think, 1999, there have been eight zone changes to PLR, okay? And there might have been a couple before that. But those eight, if you look at the next page, lists the, the PLRs. And Still Mountain Estates has 45, as I said. Now, Brighton Park, which was done in 2006, that now, that has 172 units. Okay? That was an industrial parcel. And interestingly enough, that was industrial parcel on Woodland, which runs off of Blue Hills Avenue. And it was originally zoned industrial too. And then it went, then, on the same night, by the way, it was changed to R3 and, and immediately thereafter to, to PLR, all in the same night. So all this was done, and all, all of the approvals were done. So when they had their hearing, they, they had all the information, all the studies and whatnot. And the commission changed it to R3, I'm sorry, to R30, and then to the PLR, all in the same night. Originally, it was approved for 90 units in 2016 and 17. They, it was a combination of communities, so they, they split property in two parts. And there's 132 apartments and 40 townhouse-type units there. And you'll see later on, I'll, I'll show you a picture of it. Philly Street is now called Mallory, Mallory Ridge, that has 78 units. And the Watkins, Overbrook, Forbes, and St. Paul's 35. Anyway, that's, that's, that's the, the total that I came up with, with 647 units have been, as a result of the PLR zone, have been provided as housing. Now, these aren't, these are the, the one called the Grand, which is Ryfield, Hallow Drive, and whatnot. It's got 90 units and I understand some of those are renting for over $4,000 a month. So I guess that would be considered luxury. And, but the, the one thing that, that all of them have, and if you look, now I'm looking at, this happens to be Still Mountain Estates, and now that has 45 units, and that was also done when that was approved, all, all aspects of it, the zone change, special permit, wetlands, it was all done on the same night. Now, if you look at that, you're going to see that it is, the way it's, the way the, I think it was 52 acres. And half of it's either an easement, which is to the west of it. And there's a nice bit of open space to the east and, and a setback from the road. And there's a lot of privacy on either side and from the road. Things that can't happen on a small lot like this. Now, this, this, the property at issue here is about nine and a half acres. And the usable amount of acreage is around three acres, I think, 3, 3.2, something of that nature. So when you say that the density is, is 1.62, okay? That's, that's done by some formula that includes some of the other land that's really undeveloped, available. For, for all intents and purposes, you still have, under this amendment, 16 units, okay? On let's say three usable acres. Do the math. That's almost, that's almost a density of five, not 1.9. So that's, that's in terms of the people that live in these houses here. So that's, that's, in terms of the people that live in these houses here, it's not 1.6 to them, it's five per acre. And because of the constraints on the site, they've had them really smash the, the units close to the, close to the, the, the east side and to the north of them. And obviously, in these other projects that I've just named, they didn't have those kind of problems because they, they built self-contained units. And the next one you have here is, is, this is Watkins. You just, you're, I think that was prior to this one. That's before you, this was the most recent project that you developed. Because I think you had, Watkins went first and then, or Overbrook went first and then Watkins. And then they, they basically did a revision where they combined some of the Overbrook approval to the one that finally approved. That's what this, that's what the map on, on the screen shows now. And here, there now, you see there, they've got spatiality on the borders all, all around. And they're even set back from Watkins there. So they had more room to, to, to work with than you do on this site. And, and where, where the houses are, there, there's a considerable distance to the houses on Watkins. The two houses on Watkins that are north of the project. And they're, they're, they're not in any way or shape or form in a situation like the Camerons and the Straits are on this map. Now, there's a map that's called the Grand. This is the Grand. And that's, I put that there to show how, when you have the right kind of property to develop, you can set the units in, and to quite a, quite a way from the streets and have lengthy access points so you don't create these jam situation like this. And that has, I think we said 90 units. And the next one here is, is a, a photo I took from the internet of the Brighton Park, which is, no, that's not Brighton Park. That's, that's also the Grand, I'm sorry. That's, that's shows some color to it. Basically, it's, it shows the privacy that they have there. Now, Skylar Lane, I just took from the assesses, assesses map to show how that has a nice long entryway and nice spatiality all around. And that's another successful planned luxury development. And Brighton Parkway is a Google Maps thing. There you see, if you look there, the southern portion is where the townhouses are. And the northern part, I didn't know, I couldn't make it any bigger to make a copy of it. The northern part is a, is all apartments. I think they're three or four levels. They each have, there's a community pool for each development. And the entryway in, okay, is about 500 feet long. So you wouldn't, if you drove by it, unless, if you didn't see the sign at the corner of, of Woodland and Brighton Park, you'd drive right by it. Now, under Connecticut law, the, the, the standard for commissions and doing zone changes is that they're free to modify the regulations whenever time, experience, and responsible planning for contemporary or future conditions reasonably indicate the need for a change. And that would apply in this situation as well. Is, is the timing right? Is, is, is the site, given all the, all the other development in this immediate area? And given that there's really, this is the last lot on Still Road, facing Still Road, that's available for development. And it really has, like we said earlier, roughly three plus or minus acres of developable land. And is, is there any pressing need that that has to not be just a regular R40 like it is? Someone mentioned, I think one of the other commissioners mentioned, could they subdivide it? And they have the opportunity to subdivide it, to look at, to examine it, to see how many houses they could do there and get rear lots or one of those other options, just like any other person would have owning a property in an R40 zone. And the, the discretion that I refer to the commission is having is, is tempered by the criteria that are set forth in your zoning regulations and the zoning map and the plan of conservation and development. You must find that the proposed development is in harmony with the neighborhood and character and the neighborhood and character of Still Road. Or would it better be located elsewhere in town? In other words, would this proposed development, and, and as a result of the zone change, okay? Be harmonious with the neighborhood, harmonious with the character of the Still Road neighborhood? Or would it be better located in some other part of town? And you must determine in this zone change application that the development is harmonious with the purpose of zoning set forth in Section 12A of the zoning regulations. Does it prevent overcrowding of land? Considering the character of the area, is it particularly suitable for this site? Is the bulk and activity of the proposed project, which is the proximity, the size and proximity of those, were they 16, 16 units now, in eight buildings, tucked right up to the borders of those two units? Is, is that incompatible with the character and development and nature of land? For the, and will the size and design of the project unduly interfere with the privacy, use, and enjoyment of the abutting property owners? And I think it's, it would hard for, to, to say that, that wouldn't significantly change the quality of life. Is, does the application contribute to planning principles and land use recommendations contained in Plan of Community Development? Which is the resident, the residential density plan? As I mentioned earlier, it has Still Road listed as rural and low density. And therefore, would that negatively impact and become disruptive to the orderly development of the neighborhood, greatly diminishing the quality of life? The plan of development, in, in the June 25th meeting, I submitted a, a list of sections of the Plan of Community Development that supported the denial of this zone change. And we, and I didn't list them all here again, but I did listen, listen, list a few of them. The, one of the, in the residential section of the Plan of Development says, to protect single-family neighborhoods. And they also listed targeted development areas on page 72. And that's technique that they use in their plan to influence private development of multifamily, multifamily development, the target areas. And the policy objective was to, to be a tool to preserve single-family areas of the community. And so, and there's the, I'll get you the reference. Yeah, it's about two pages, two or three pages after that, you'll see that they have the residential densities plan. If you could go a few pages forward, there it is right there. The red circles are the areas where they are recommending to key on for development for, targeted for more denser housing. And not just PLRs, but other, other zones that you have in there. And if you notice, this particular, on this map, again, look at the lower left, and you can see that the, the three, looks like an E. And next, that, that's Still Mountain. And you'll see Ball Bray to the left there. And that little spot between the two of them at the bottom is this site here. It's got a very pale yellow color to the map, and that's where low density is, okay? So that, that low density is what R40 is also scheduled as. And they have other areas that are, that are mustard yellow, deep yellow for high density. But none of those apply to this site here. So I don't see how it's possible for the applicant to establish that it comply, that it satisfied the, the plan of development, it was consistent with the plan of development when it's, when it's shown, as, when it's not shown as being an area that they're targeting for higher density housing. And the future land use, if you go two more, two more forward, you'll see the future land use plan. And the future land use plan, it shows, it shows that the Still Mountain Estates is shown as multifamily, as is the Ball Bray. And the, and the, the land that we're talking about this evening is white, rural and low density. Which I think reasonably can be read as, they don't think there needs to be any more in this location. Or they, they, they would have made it yellow, or I guess you'd call that yellow, mustard maybe. Does the application contribute to the planning principles and land use contained in, in the plan of development? That's basically what we're saying here. And the other thing I want to say is that, based on your, your common knowledge, I'm saying, as, as commissioners, okay? You've heard something, you've heard about the peak, peak hour traffic and the traffic study, how it's not going to create any additional, because of the size of the project, it's not going to create any additional traffic problems, et cetera. But, and there are case, there is case law on this. You're, as a commissioner, making a legislative decision, which is a discretionary decision, you can use your common knowledge of the existing traffic, particularly when it comes to congestion. If there's been several members of the community at, at the initial hearing testified that there was considerable congestion, especially during the morning rush hour. In fact, I think they invited the commissioner to take a look at it. I'm sure you, you know all the traffic spots in town. But you don't have to ignore that. In other words, you don't have to agree with the traffic guy in terms, in terms of, that's, the, the traffic study gives you, it's a mathematical thing, okay? And it comes out with numbers, this is what the tree, this is what the, the traffic count is. And it could be even higher, and it wouldn't, wouldn't cause a problem. But, you know, the traffic doesn't, you know, that doesn't mean that that intersection can't be a problem intersection. So when you're making this decision, and with things like that and discretion, just like the fact that there's been, obviously, this has been a successful tool. Because you've had many parcels of land that were very suitable to do higher density under this PLR definition. But this isn't one of them. Those other ones were larger places, that, that was raw land, they had a, a lot more to work with in terms of design. And it certainly wasn't going to have anywhere near the impact that this would have on, on the two families that live right here. And will it create more traffic? No matter what it is, anything it develops is going to create more traffic. But will that make the existing rush hour traffic safe, more unsafe? I don't know. That's something that you have to decide in terms of whether you want to, whether, it all goes into the hopper in terms of determining whether you want to change the zone on this part, whether you think this property needs to have its own change. In conclusion, in, in the narrative supplied, in the applicant's narrative that they supplied as required in their application, it asserted that the property will become suitable, this property will become suitable for redevelopment consisting with the existing uses along the Still Road corridor. A zone change to PLR would allow for a natural extension of the present residential zone along Still Road. The proposed zone change would not fundamentally change the overall residential character of Still Road and would be complementary to adjacent properties in the neighborhood. Well, I think that that is totally wrong. This doesn't look anything like Still Mountain Estates, nor does it look like Ball Bray in terms of its spatiality and, and, and character. And it would be hard, it's hard to say that it would be complementary to these properties. It, it, is it a, is it a multifamily development? Yep, to that extent. But the, the, not all developments are created equal. And, and I, the thing is, does, do you need another one? And when you have a raw piece of land like Still Mountain, it couldn't have been better. You had, you had a perfect buffer inside, and, and there's, the houses aren't really intrusive, these nude houses aren't intruding on the surrounding properties the way that's intruding on these two houses. The property, and the property is already suitable for redevelopment, consistent with the use. In other words, this property, as an R40, you can build houses on it, you can try to get rear lots. And, and that, that can be consistent with all the other R40 properties in the area. They're on the same position. There's probably some people in here that don't live as close as that. But I think that they have probably some, something to say about keeping it R40 is, is, is just fine. And, and again, it's not that the Still Road hasn't satisfied its obligation to have newer zones, zones, 271 units. And, and now you have this one last little piece, and, and that's got to be changed as well. When there's many other sections. And look at the diversity of housing types that now exist in Bloomfield. And will continue, especially while this housing crisis is going on. Because there, there's no question, there's still a need for apartments. You've done a great job in satisfying, you don't, you don't have, you're not even eligible for 8-30 because you still, you know, you have satisfied more than the 10% there. And it doesn't mean you can't have more. And you, you have a, a lot more interesting zones than a lot of other towns that I'm familiar with in the area. But this is, is, is not, is, to me, is, is a non-starter, as, as a place to, to add a few more houses and at the same time destroy the quality of life of the people that live right next to it. So I think that there's no question that it would have a crushing destabilizing effect in the neighborhood and a major impact on the quality of life. And we, we surely urge the commission to, to die at this change of zone because it's absolutely unnecessary. I'm happy to answer any questions.
If you're done, we are going to go to the comments section, is where we left off.
I would like to respond to that appropriately timed.
Sure, you'll, you'll have a chance to make closing arguments.
It's fine.
Yes. At this time, we're going to pick up where we left off, and that is with comments from the audience. If you have any comments, please come up to the podium, state your name and address. We would like to limit all, all comments to three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, thank you. My name is Seth Boynick. I'm in a butter. I'll be brief, by the way. I, a couple of, so I have two properties. I live in a house at nine thirty-eight Mountain Road, and I have an adjacent extra building lot. A couple of weeks ago, I went to the town. I paid a tax bill for half of the year on the property, the two properties, the house, extra building lot, and a couple of old cars that don't have considerable value. And it took a bite out of $10,000. Well, there's a reason we pay high taxes. And that is for the, the privacy and the, the quality of life that comes with a zone like an R40 zone. Now, my, my lots happen to be two acres, so it's really effectively R80. That was a subdivision that took place before I owned the land. But, but so, so, you know, I'm, I'm a senior. I'm semi-retired. And I work largely to pay taxes on these properties. I do it to have the quality of life that comes with a sort of a bucolic setting like the surrounding area on Still Road and Mountain Road.
Excuse me, sir. Before you go any further, could you, for the record, can you just repeat your name and address?
Yeah, Seth, did I not say that? I'm sorry. So it's Seth, last name Boynick. And the house is on nine thirty-eight Mountain Road, and I have a, an extra lot on nine thirty-two Mountain Road. A year or so ago, I inquired about, about having a, an in-law apartment at my place to help offset the cost of taxes. And I was told at the time, I thought maybe, you know, a graduate student at University of Hartford would want a place to live there. And I was told at the time that this was an illegal use that in this zone, and maybe elsewhere in town too. I don't know that. That the only allowed use for, for a sort of, in effect, expanding the density would be if it were a family member. So given that, it seems that going from R40, or in my case, effectively R80, to something profoundly different somehow doesn't seem right. Separate from that, this issue, I, I know the land well. I've walked it many times. It's laced with woodlands, wetlands, excuse me, rather. We, I'm, by, sort of by hobby, yes, sir.
Thirty seconds.
Really? Okay. I don't know that I can conclude in thirty seconds, but it, I think it's an important wildlife corridor. There's lots of sensitive wetlands back there. There are critters that live on the wetlands. We've diminished wildlife areas around there profoundly. I've seen a huge change in, in the amount of animals that live, that come out of the area back there. And additionally, and thanks for extending this. Additionally, we have a tremendous number of new housing units in town. And, and so it can't be demonstrated that we have need for, immediate need for more units.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Straight. My husband and I live at one sixty-two Still Road, next to the Cameron's, abutting the proposed development and the parties most directly aggrieved by this application. Please don't underestimate how the approval of this change of zone to PLR will decimate our quality of life and devalue our property. We simply don't understand why it's necessary to change the R40 property to PLR, especially for a parcel of land that is so conflicted and burdened that less than half of it is buildable and could be considered an ecological sanctuary. Just looking at the renderings shows that these multifamily dwellings are considerably different and unlike our single-family neighborhood, including the beautiful units at Still Mountain Estates. Neither the original plans nor the revised plans fit on this location or in this neighborhood. Just looking at this monolithic development that would be adjacent to our homes shows that the PLR is completely unnecessary. The property can be developed very nicely as an R40 that would certainly enable the owner to build single-family homes. This would be compatible and less potentially damaging to our neighborhood and quality of life. If this zoning change is approved, there will be four PLRs in less than a mile. And actually, there are six PLRs in less than two miles. That would include the Long Estate and Schuler Lane and Simsbury Road. The four developed PLRs all have a similar threat to start with, and they're tucked away, almost disappearing into the surrounding areas while this Still Road development, you could still see it right when you go down the road. It's right up front and center. Do we really need four in less than a mile? No, not really. Our neighborhood has its fair share. If you change the zone to PLR, it will never be an R40 single-family again. It is the last piece of land that is buildable on Still Road. Please take a pause because once the zoning is changed, it would not be enhancing the neighborhood or the people who've made their homes there. Only Tracy, the owner, and Dave, the developer, Ron's not here, would benefit from it. We are the ones who want to stay.
Thirty seconds.
We need conservation in action. Please consider this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, William Straight, one sixty-two Still Road, Bloomfield, Connecticut. The Still Pines Development Project, in my opinion, directly opposes the philosophy of the Bloomfield regulations. The project in no way maintains or enhances the character of our neighborhood. On the contrary, the developers are constricted by the environmental character of the parcel of land they plan to develop. The parcel at this time is a diverse wildlife habitat that I have observed over the last eighteen years we have lived here. I have observed bears, deers, coyotes, turkeys, fisher cats, bobcats, owls, bullfrogs, and countless birds and other animals to numerous to mention. The project will drastically affect the welfare of the abundant and diverse ecosystem that has been just, that has not been disturbed for probably hundreds of years. The proposed development is confined to a smaller area in front of the environmentally diverse area and will undoubtedly create noise, light, and create environmental disturbances to the area and dramatically affect the existing wildlife. The project also contradicts the philosophy of improving the economic development, or, I'm sorry, the economic value of our properties. Should the project go forward to be, to be allowed to squeeze into the small parcel next to our properties, it will decrease the economic, economic value of the properties by decreasing the peace and tranquility that we enjoy now with woods and wildlife in a neighborhood of people, cars, light, and noise. The project is thirty-five feet from our prospective properties. No number of buffer trees and barriers will hide the project. The proposed project engulfs both of our properties in a way that will only diminish the value of our properties. The purpose of the regulations clearly state that they are implemented to prevent and avoid overcrowding of land and avoid undue concentration of population. This parcel, in my opinion, directly contradicts this purpose, allowing eight structures originally zoned for two or three houses in a small concentrated area that in no way fits in the character of the existing neighborhood of single-family homes. The regulation also provides for lessening of congestion in the streets. As we all know, Still Road is used as a cut-through road with many cars traveling down it every day, none of them residents of Still Road. In my opinion, this project will only increase the congestion of Still Road. This in turn will increase the stress of everybody trying to pull out on Still Road from my driveway without causing an accident.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Cameron. I live at one five-four Still Road. I want to just say a few words about this proposed change and voice my opposition to the zoning change from PLR. I want to touch three items from the Bloomfield P O C D. Theme one was, is what do we want to do to project? Water, water resource preservation has been a high priority for Bloomfield for forty years. Then one goes on to say, protect water resources, protect habitat, vegetation, protect contiguous forest areas, which include encouraging property owners to retain vegetation. Granting this PLR would negatively, negatively impact everything that the town wants to protect. The town's character should be protected. Things that detract from the character are the look of some buildings and development sites. This development would certainly detract from the character of Still Road. Theme two, how we want to grow. Continue the project, continue to protect the pattern of development by protecting single-family homes. Zoning has been useful to, a useful tool for protecting the existing neighborhoods. Changing the zoning from R40 to PLR is not protecting our neighborhood aesthetics. To promote high-quality development that enhances the town's character, the PLR development is completely out of character with our neighborhood and does not enhance the town's character. In section six point three states that, "When Bloomfield has a chance to influence the private development, the town should guide new multifamily development to targeted areas." Still Road is not a designated target area. This policy objective was also intended as a tool to protect remaining agricultural land and to preserve single-family areas of the community. Granted, this PLR will do just the opposite. And theme three, future land use plan. Principle two, expanding the housing opportunities and design choices to accommodate a variety of household types and needs. Changing a PLR would result in higher residential development, which would negatively impact the safety of our road. Chapter five and six of the P O C D states protecting the single-family neighborhoods is a high--
Thirty seconds.
Thirty?
Thirty seconds.
Okay, I'll, I'll go quick. States protecting the single-family neighborhoods is a high priority in the town. I'm also asking the commission to please protect our neighborhood and deny this zoning change. Thank you. And if you live on Still Road like I do, and I'm retired, and I watch the cars that come down there because it's such a busy road. And they, on an average day, trucks, semi-trucks, the trailer trucks, construction equipment, over three thousand vehicles come down that street every day. That's how busy it is. Thank you very much.
Oh, yep, and thank you.
Hi, I'm Sally Hockman. I live at nine forty-eight Mountain Road. My property directly abuts this parcel of land. And I'm opposed to this mainly the idea of adding more traffic to Still Road. Still Road, number one, is overdeveloped to begin with. There are no sidewalks on Still Road. We have people walking. I see mothers with baby carriages. And they are, they have a little bit of woods on one side, a bicycle lane, and two-way traffic going on a curvy, windy road. And it's dangerous enough. We have kids getting school buses early in the morning. The last thing Still Mountain, Still Road needs is more traffic and more congestion. And I just think it's overdeveloped. This is the last little piece of land left. Let's leave it the way it is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Noreen Cameron, and my husband Brian and I reside at one five-four Still Road. I am here again to voice my deep concern and opposition to the proposed zone change for the properties at one forty, one forty-two Still Road, which is directly adjacent to my property. As requested at the last meeting, Mr. Soli went back to the drawing board and came back with a revised development plan consisting of eight buildings, all duplexes for a total of sixteen units instead of the recommended fifteen units. And there are now forty-three parking spaces. However, the compressed footprint is the same. This development is contingent upon the requested zone change being passed, taking the land from low-density R40 to yet another high-density PLR. How many more PLRs do we need? At the last hearing, Mr. Soli asserted that it was his belief that this development would have no substantial impact on the traffic in the area. It is quite the contrary. Assuming each of the sixteen units houses 2.4 people, we would have approximately thirty-eight new residents. If each unit has two vehicles, that would equate to thirty-two, thirty-two new vehicles. If each of these vehicles makes a minimum of three trips per day, that would result in an additional ninety-six vehicle movements per day on an already significantly congested street. The increased traffic resulting from this development poses significant, significant safety risks, particularly for children and pedestrians. More cars on our roads means a higher likelihood of accidents, making our community less safe for everyone. According to a recent crash study data, there have been twenty-four serious accidents at the intersection of Still Road and Mountain Road since 2015. Contrary to Mr. Soli's belief, as a resident who has firsthand experience of the traffic issues already present on Still Road and who would be directly impacted by this development, this is a substantial impact. This is a fact, not a belief. Let me be clear. I have no issue with a single-family home being built next to my property in keeping with the R40 designation, just as it was when my husband and I purchased our home ten years ago and as it was throughout the decades before that. I understand the need for growth and progress in fair housing. However, erecting more PLR developments does not come close to solving the root cause of the issue. Rather, it serves to exacerbate it.
Thirty seconds.
Our neighborhood was designated R40 to maintain a low-density population, preserving the tranquility and spaciousness that defines Still Road. Converting this to another high-density PLR disrupts the character of our community. I urge the commission to take into consideration how detrimental this development will be to the Still Road community and the risks it poses to the residents. Listen to the residents who experience the congestion each and every day. Again, I am-- How many PLRs do we need? When is enough enough?
Thank you.
My name is Art Peterson. I live at nine Still Lane in West Hartford. Still Road is a neighborhood predominantly in West Hartford and comprised of single-family homes. And I've noticed tremendous pride in homeownership in our neighborhood. It's reflected in the upkeep and investment our residents make in their homes. I see people put on decks, put in, putting new kitchens, new roofs, solar landscaping. And it's a really a great neighborhood to live in. And to put a Bloomfield apartment complex in our West Hartford neighborhood would completely alter the face and fabric of our neighborhood forever. The renters, as I say, they don't have skin in the game. They don't care about property values. They don't care about upkeep. If this was a proposal for a single-family development, I would even be here. And again, single-family homes would be much more in keeping with the character of our neighborhood. We have too much traffic on Still Road and way too many speeders. This proposal would drastically increase the amount of traffic on Still Road. I can recall a conversation I had with a West Hartford building official who told me that Still Road was his favorite street in West Hartford. Because of-- me that Still Road was his favorite street in West Hartford because with its stone walls and sugar maples and windy road, it was the only rural road in West Hartford. And I say, let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Steve Rogers. Um, I reside at seventeen, seventeen Benton Drive. I also happen to be the president of Still Mountain Estates if there are any lingering questions about Still Mountain. Just by way of reminder, you've heard a lot of owners in the neighborhood mention that only about three acres of this nine acre parcel is developable. That's because it's surrounded by woodlands and to the east, that large wooded area contains a vernal pool that is owned by Still Mountain, and it's under the protection of a conservation easement. To the west is a hundred year floodplain. Talked to some people down on Still Lane about the flooding issues that they're dealing with. So, as I step back and kind of look at this, I would respectfully suggest that you, we are at an inflection point here. On the one hand, there's a developer with an option on this property where an opportunity to make more money requires a zone change that unlocks an ability to build now sixteen units in a multi-family complex. On the other side of that is a community of single family homeowners. Still Road is eight tenths of a mile long. And along the Still Road itself, there's twenty two homes, not one, including the forty five homes within Still Mountain Estates, is a multifamily residence. So you're being called upon to balance between competing interests guided by the town plan that places a high value on protecting single family neighborhoods, that emphasizes avoiding changes that adversely affects the economic value of existing homes, that places a high value, words of the plan, on avoiding to the maximum extent possible alterations that affect wetlands, vernal pools, and a hundred year floodplains. There's no right to a zone change that the applicant is seeking. This commission is being asked to exercise-
Yeah, thirty seconds.
This commission is being asked to exercise its judgment whether the process should move forward. And I appreciate that this is just the zoning piece of this. I assume that there's some master plan that can be formulated that fits technical density requirements and that there probably is some engineering solution that conceivably solves wetlands and vernal pool concerns. But I would urge you to step back and ask whether-
Thank you, sir.
And ask whether such a final product is consistent with the character of our community of single family homes. The developer will-
Excuse me, sir? Excuse me?
I have two sentences. Could I do those, please?
Okay. Everyone else has adhered to the three minute rule.
I have just two, two points right here. The developer will reap short financial benefit, but those of us who remain behind will have to live with the consequences. You have the opportunity-
Excuse me, sir?
Start this process now.
Sir?
Yep?
I'm gonna ask you to stop now.
All right.
Can, next, anyone else? Next? Sure.
Robert Dickinson, four hundred Seaberry Drive. In reference to the regulations requirement of constructing sidewalk or eight foot multi-use pass abutting new developments, including the sidewalk or multi-use path, and the layout for this presentation would have given a more complete idea of the total appearance of this project. I hope you will, if this were to go forward, I would hope they would consider an eight foot side path so that bicycles and safety, bicycles are safely accommodated in addition to pedestrians. It is not safe for children to ride on this road. And I'd just like to say in conclusion, after hearing many arguments here, I totally agree that, and I would oppose this zone change. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else from the audience?
Joe Pompey, nine Benton Drive. I have one question for the commission, and that is that-
Excuse me? This is a comment section.
Okay.
This is not questions.
I'll put out there just a thought for people then as a comment. I'll just say, if we put this thing in and if there are going to be more children living in that area, would Still Mountain then require sidewalks? Is that brief enough?
Yes. Okay. If there's no one else from the audience, Linda?
No one online.
No one online?
Margaret Dropoff.
No, I'm here.
You're here?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Margaret Johnley, ten Old Orchard Road, Bloomfield, Connecticut. I'm just stating the fact that I'm opposed to this. I feel the character of our town is being chipped away, and I agree with many of the residents that are, that live in that area, and I feel for them that their neighborhood is being changed. And as a Bloomfield resident, there's a lot of us that don't even live in that neighborhood that have that same feeling, and we really want to preserve the open space and the beauty of Bloomfield. That is why we chose to live there opposed to any other town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's no one else online? We'll go to the commission for questions, and we'll start with Commissioner Blunt. Comments, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also have a large concern for traffic volume. I live in the area. I see it daily, and what's not being calculated are the trips by delivery vehicles. If you took a look at even my road, which is unpaved and private, I've never seen so many delivery vehicles, and there's just three houses on the street. So I would have a definite concern about increased traffic and safety in this area. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Marshall Neely, comments?
Thank you. I drove up and down that street several times so that I could get a feel for myself. Although I don't live over there, I walk a lot, and I saw the congestion and I saw how difficult it would be for pedestrians. I looked at some pictures with flooding, and I couldn't believe the amount of water. I don't know what construction would do to the, to the area with all of the water and the level of water that I saw in the pictures. I simply ask myself, would I be, would I be okay with this if it, if this was my street? Would I want this apartments, these buildings built in my neighborhood? And I can see from the developer's point of view, but I can also see from the homeowner's point of view that, who've been paying their taxes and living over there for a long time. So I haven't heard a compelling statement other than, other than, you know, reducing the amount of homes from one number down to sixteen, but I, I really haven't heard anything that was compelling regarding putting this development in that area. And I, I thought about the R forty and a statement that someone made that the R forty zone could still remain R forty. I'm not sure, can still remain R forty, and development could take place. I might be a little off on that, but I think that's what I heard. So when someone comes back to speak, would you kindly mind, mind addressing that thought that I have? And thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Peters?
So I feel like the common theme with development on Still Road is increased traffic and pedestrian safety, and I could sympathize with that, given the fact when we think about that there are twenty existing single family homes and we're going to be almost in doubling homeownership on this road by adding sixteen, that just seems like a recipe for a disaster where the residents have already explained that this is a high traffic area to begin with, and it doesn't seem like there's been any consideration to improving the quality across the street front for residents. So that's another thing that I took into consideration, or I'm taking into consideration. A big thing that stuck out to me more so, because if you guys ever heard me speak and talk about character and I talk about surrounding environment, going from R forty to a PLR does not seem in alignment with the character of the community, especially when you look at the P O C D and pretty much all of the area on this border, it seems like the intent was to keep it single family, if not rural. And the increasing the density in this space seems in complete opposition of what that is. I do appreciate there being some kind of consideration between masking or hiding this community that's within, but that doesn't actually change what's being removed. It just, like I said, puts on a mask. And I also actually appreciate that there's a resident from West Hartford speaking the same sentiments as Bloomfield residents, because it kind of seems like there's a divided sentiment from your presentation saying that you've, are in alignment with West Hartford and Bloomfield has a couple stipulations that kind of don't directly oppose it, but it just kind of feels better to know that a West Hartford resident also does not support that. All in all, I would, I would just say that this, the placement of this just seems odd for me, and the maintaining of the R forty to an, or an R eighty in this given area seems more in alignment from what Bloomfield residents hope to see and what already exists. I just don't think an R, PLR at this location seems to be the best, the best location, especially when given the concentration. I get, I get the density, you know, calculation that says that, that this makes sense, but when we look at the concentration of homes at this one spot, it just seems a lot different from what you guys are, you know, proposing. And I think that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Bolton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, before I echo the sentiments of my fellow commissioners, I'd like to thank the applicant, the design team, the attorney for your presentation. I think you did a great job. Having said that, my position hasn't changed from the initial meeting. I also would like to, to thank Director Coleman for his, his recommendation and his assessment, which I do support. I don't believe that changing, that, that, that lot from an R forty to a PLR is consistent with the character of that, of that street. I, I have strong reservations about the traffic. I live not too far from, from that road and heavily trafficked, and it's a cut through street because I use it as a cut through street as well. But I, I don't believe that this is consistent with the character of that, of that street. I, I love the homes that are on that street, but they're nice and spacious and beautiful homes. I just don't think that this is a, an application that I could support, but I truly don't believe that is consistent with the character of that neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolton. Commissioner Millet?
I'll try not to repeat too much. It, the updated plan, as usually the developers come back with, you know, nice updates. I'm not sure it's still going to convince for the, the zone change. In, in general, the density, I wouldn't necessarily have a problem with, but the land itself, I just don't think it's going to support. As was described by many, the common theme of the PLR is, is the idea to tuck them back, get them away from the street, and then you can have your density. So in general, the density not an issue, but for this piece of land, because of the wetlands and everything on it, I don't think we can pull that off. Traffic, I would say on the street, I'm going to guess the majority of the traffic is not generated from the residents. So when the traffic engineer says, you know, there will not be a, a significant increase, I would tend to believe him and take that, but the problem is there's already so much traffic to begin with. So I don't think traffic necessarily plays into it. Again, I think it goes back to the property. The, the front edge on the property to the road is very small. I think I mentioned last time, it's a U shaped property, so you're going around R forty. We're talking about the, the types of housing. I don't really have a problem with the duplexes. I have a problem with the multifamily. The, the problem again goes back to, to the land and whether it's appropriate to move this from R forty over to PLR. And just two last comments. I did hear some, some comments about accessory dwelling units. Please look at our updated regulations because they have changed. That was one. And the other one, probably not important because I can't find my notes, so, public service announcement there.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Millet. Commissioner James?
Um, I've said many times before that housing is very important to me. We are in a housing crisis, like this is a serious, serious issue, not just in our town, across the state and across the country. There is a squeeze on housing since the housing crash. Developers have not been building like they used to, permitting is way down. We all saw the Affordable Housing Plan that we passed earlier this year that shows that the average housing size is increasing. That means more people are staying at home because there are no homes to buy. There is fewer housing options for people because they're not building as much as they used to. When you don't build new housing units, that means the stock that we have currently becomes more unaffordable. There's an idea of naturally occurring affordable housing, where when you're building new units, older units become less expensive. But since that's not happening, we're not having that naturally occurring affordable housing. It's very expensive to live in Bloomfield. It's very expensive to live in Bloomfield. It's only getting more expensive because we as a zoning board are the bottleneck that is stopping development, that is not allowing housing to be built in a, in a pace and a way that will accommodate the population increases, the need of more affordable, more units, just in general. We're in such a squeeze that we need all types of housing units, not just affordable housing units. We need every single type of a housing unit. And so when I read the PLR zoning, I can't understand what development would qualify under it, if not this one, because we, earlier this summer, approved a development that was single-family homes not even a mile away. That was Watkins. There was many, there was much debate. There were residents speaking out. Residents were opposed to it. The developer heard what the residents were saying, what they heard what we were saying, and they went back to the drawing board and they updated it. And they they all came to a compromise for something to be built, and we passed that zoning change. So I can't comprehend why, less than a mile away, we're saying that it doesn't fit the character when to the immediate west of this property is a PLR, when less than a mile away is Watkins that we just approved, which was single-family, which actually doesn't fit in the zoning regulations because it's single-family. And this is a multifamily proposed development, which the PLR calls for and says we need. That's that's those are the type of properties that should fit in the PLR. The density is nowhere near what we approved for Watkins either. It's in one point six seven, Watkins, I think, was two point four. We have a P O C D that we're going to talk about that literally has top of the housing goals is to increase the housing stock, diversify the housing stock. Bloomfield is over ninety percent single-family homes. Not everyone can get a single-family home. Diversifying the housing stock allows people to get more opportunities to own. There was also a comment about having Bloomfield housing or apartments in West Hartford. I I take offense to that. I don't know what you meant by that. The idea that Bloomfield apartments or people from Bloomfield can't, whatever that meant, be in West Hartford, I don't know what that was. That doesn't sit well with me, and I don't appreciate that comment. Because people have a right to housing. Every single person has a right to housing, somewhere to live, nice housing, fair housing, whatever it is. We we all deserve somewhere to live. And I also hear that most of this land is not developable, developable. So that what I I hear that it's going to be conserved. It's not going to be something that we develop in the future. There's a piece of it that we can develop in this proposed development that the developer is offering. But majority of it is not going to be developed. It's going to be maintained. We talk about wildlife. I live off of Tower Avenue. It's in a high-density area. We get bears, we get deers, we get. We saw the bobcat that was in our neighborhood. It's not going to go away. They'll still be there. We can have both because we need housing in Bloomfield. I don't know when we will see an applicant that has been so responsive to the comments and the feedback. I actually thought the zoning, the density should be higher, considering that it did fit the requirements of the PLR. So for them to come back, I thank the developer for, you know, being so reasonable and wanting to work with us as a town. I hope that regardless of what happens in Bloomfield tonight, that, you know, you will continue to do business in Bloomfield because we do need housing. We need way more units, and we will continue to have these conversations. And I hope that there will be more commitment or energy or what have you from our commission to increase housing development in Bloomfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner James. Commissioner Goff.
Yes, thanks. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, a couple of things. Following Commissioner James, I I agree with her completely that we need to have a we as a commission and as just a community need to have a probably a more robust discussion about housing in general, and I I I hope that will follow in terms of the talking about P O C D. I overall echo most of the comments made earlier by 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 my fellow commissioners. I do think that, you know, what does the thing that I find confusing about this application, or not the application, but the consideration application, is the fact that we do have still mountain estates there. I'm not sure for the character of this neighborhood or this area of town, we that actually should have gone in, and I'm not criticizing that. It's part of the town now. I do think that makes it a little more difficult, but I do think that at this point in time, you know, I I will defer. I I think I I think the planners' comments and the planners' analysis, the situation are such that leaving this as R forty, a single-family home area, I think is is more consistent is consistent with what we are looking at now. And I am inclined to 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 continue to do that. I'm also concerned about the, you know, and I think we need to have a discussion, again, changing zones and then things not going forward and those remaining in the zones is a bit of a a bit problematic to me. Not that I think that's necessarily the case with this developer. I I also will echo my colleagues. I think this developer has been very responsive and tried to come up with something. I just don't think that a zone change at this point is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Goff. Commissioner Ola, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
Do you have any comments on this particular application?
I take note of the fact that a lot of the features of this particular proposed proposed development seem to, again, going back, you know, comparing this to past applications that we've seen, it looks to me like that this is an improvement over what has been passed in the past. So I would like to get some professional, technical advice as to what is acceptable and what works. I because that's the only thing that that is left. There's been a developer has made effort to improve on their proposal and to accommodate some of the
Excuse me, Commissioner Ola.
Yes.
Are your comments in regards to this particular application or just general topics?
To this particular application.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just referring, you know, comparing it to the others that we've looked at in the past, you know, that have passed. My point is that perhaps we need some more technical guidance as to how this proposed development, the technical aspect of it fits the codes as they are. In other words, what the ones that we've passed that have been approved in the past, it looks to me like in some ways, this is an improvement. This new proposed development is an improvement over those in some ways. But the thing that will help me is to know more about what the technical aspect of it that fits the zoning as it is or what needs to be improved. What features of this proposal need to be improved? You know, based on their professionals, things like determination of whether or not the traffic impact is is acceptable and other technical technical issues like that. So I would like to learn, get the input of the professionals. I'm talking about technical professionals, the engineers, to guide us in this. So that's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you. And my comments would would be I thank the applicant for coming in and also adjusting his application to some of the comments that were made the first time around. For me, I'm a big supporter of PLRs and and I'm hoping to see more in Bloomfield. However, on this particular application, I guess I'll start with the Plan of Conservation Development. The current Plan of Conservation Development has this area designated as rural, rural and low-density. Our future Plan of Conservation Development also has it designated as rural and low-density, which immediately give me a lot of pause in terms of wanting to change a zoning requirement for PLR. I don't think that putting it in this particular area is sufficient. I mean, I I just don't think you can take anything and put it anywhere. I would love to see the applicant work a little bit more closer with our staff, and maybe we might can identify another area in town that would be a little bit more suitable for this. So my my thoughts is that I would be leaning more against this and deferring to the recommendation of the of staff. And hopefully, they can they can kind of find something or another area where you may can come back and and do and, you know, reapply or else consider residential. I don't think that would be a problem at all because it's already designated as residential. But changing it to PLR is inconsistent with our Plan of Conservation Development. And I just don't think that in that particular area, it's a good fit. With that said, the applicant will have one last chance to make any closing remarks before we close this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me just start with where you ended. We do appreciate the opportunity to meet with town staff about this. And we sort of ended up on the road of PLR based upon recommendations to go this route. So that's why we're here, because town staff suggested this. Why are we at the number of units that we're at? Two months ago, the recommendation was reduce your density. I guess the number was one point nine, something like that, that Still Mountain Estates has. And so that's why we ended up at the number that we're at, because that was the recommendation of staff, and we've tried to follow that. So we understand that now, tonight, the recommendation of staff is to vote against this proposal. But I just wanted to make clear for the record that we haven't gone off on our own come up with our own ideas. And we are here with this idea because we were given some guidance in that direction. In terms of the commission's discretion to make this zone change, of course, you have it. There was discussion from Attorney Fahey about general statutes in your regulations. There's no question that you have the authority to grant this zone change if you wish to. And there are ample sections of the Plan of Conservation and Development that would support that. I understand that there are a couple of maps that are twelve years old. Of course, that's not binding. Of course, those maps, as I said, are a dozen years old and very well may change when you update your Plan of Conservation or Development. One question that I was asked to address is what's the need for this? I think Commissioner James said it better than I ever could. And in fact, even Attorney Fahey admitted that we need more diversity in housing options in Bloomfield and greater Hartford. I understand. We are literally in their backyard. There's a reason why there's a phrase, "Not in my backyard." So it doesn't surprise anybody that there's opposition to it. But what I would encourage the commission to understand is that they have to balance the community as a whole, your entire town, because there will always be neighbors that are opposed to change, and that's understandable. But it's not about balancing simply this property and somebody next door. It's about balancing housing opportunities for the entire community. And we think that we offer a very good opportunity to do that, notwithstanding the fact that, of course, some of the neighbors don't want this. I want to touch a little bit on site plan, though a lot of the stuff with the wetlands and the site plan would be for another day. Two two points. In our revised plan, we obviously drew back the homes from Still Road considerably, one hundred thirty feet, I believe, is what the engineer said. That's that's more than the homes at Still Mountain Estates. That's more than the homes that are on Still Road. So there's requests to have it set back and buffers and things like that. We we did that. Okay? In fact, more than the other PLR that's already been approved. There were criticisms of this plan because the homes are too close together. Well, one of the biggest criticisms of R forty zoning, single-family housing, is that you'll take a parcel of land, twenty acres, and chop it up into one-acre pieces. And what ends up happening? You got a big road that goes through it. You end up clear-cutting. This is why cluster subdivisions came into vogue twenty, thirty years ago. And the whole idea was what you want to do is rather than giving everybody an acre, you put the homes a little bit closer together, have a community. And that way, you accomplish what we're accomplishing, which is you're taking the habitat and you're setting it aside so that it stays in its current state. So I don't view it as a bad thing that we're putting these homes closer together. We're accomplishing a goal there. And I think if you take a look at the aerial maps, the the space between the homes and our revised proposal is hardly any different than next door at Still Mountain Estates. There's a question about whether Still Road is suitable for PLR. Well, of course it is. There's a development right next door with three times as many units in it that this commission decided to approve twenty years ago. So to now say that Still Road is not suitable for PLR would be basically say, well, you guys got it wrong twenty years ago. Well, I don't think that's right. I think that the commission's already established that this is a suitable road for it. Is it harmonious with the character of the neighborhood? Of course it is. Still Mountain Estates, we're essentially matching it. We are extending the zone. We're not plopping down something in the middle of nowhere. There's forty-five units next door. We're proposing to add sixteen. It's about a third of that. I I don't fully understand the discussion between single-family standalone versus the duplex. I really think that's a distinction without a difference. There were comments about renters versus homeowners again. I don't know what that has to do with anything. A lot of people are having trouble buying houses right now. So this is part of the diversity in the housing stock is you sometimes need to have renters and you sometimes need to have homeowners. But I know plenty of folks that rent. I've rented in the past. We're just as devoted to their community as homeowners are. So I don't think we should be saying that renters are bad people. I should note that Still Mountain Estates next door has its own challenges too. There's a lot of wetlands there. There's an aquifer that was mentioned. So there's a reason why that got packed in a little bit. We're basically doing the same thing. Comments about how this will drastically increase traffic. I I understand folks feel that way, but we have experts who do this for a living. And they said that the traffic impact is negligible. I understand that perhaps folks are unhappy with the current speed of of traffic. That's that's an enforcement issue that we have to deal with. So in all, I think we've established why this is consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development in whole. I think we've established why there's a need for this development. I think we've established that's, in fact, in harmony with the surrounding area. I understand that some other folks that live here don't like it. It's okay. But I think you need to go back and take a look at the community as a whole. And I think as in the community as a whole, this fits in as furtherance your housing goals. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that said.
My last point, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
We would ask that tonight you do close the public hearing and vote on the application.
Yes. Okay, with that said, the chair entertain a motion to close this public hearing?
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Abstention, chair votes aye. Okay. Motion.
Mr. Chair, I can make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment and related master plan as revised to establish a planned luxury residential district with a maximum density of one point six seven dwelling units per acre or as otherwise approved by the commission, that being the one point six seven, in a total of sixteen dwelling units in the form of eight duplexes with the following conditions outlined in the memo from staff dated August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. And would we need an effective date for this? For the for the zone change? For the for the zone change?
I think one of the effective dates is on the condition...
It... Okay, on the...
It would be in one of the earlier staff reports.
Okay, so... Then I would root the conditions within the memo then. Thank you.
On filing of the plan markets.
Right, and that's the condition. Condition one, effective upon the filing of said approval in the land records.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion on this application? All those in favor of approving this application signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Aye.
No, these are nays.
Yeah.
For the record, Joyce, would you need a handhold or anything to make it easier for Okay. We'll start at Commissioner Blint.
My vote is nay.
Commissioner Marchenely?
Nay.
Commissioner Peters?
Nay.
Commissioner Bolton?
Nay.
Commissioner Millet?
Nay.
Commissioner James?
I'm voting?
Oh, no, that's right. Commissioner Blint. Commissioner Goff?
Nay.
And the chair votes nay. Application has been denied. Next item on the agenda, we'll go into... Wait, I'll wait until they clear the room.
I was still with the cord flip.
Say something off the record.
Thanks so much.
Thanks so much. Now I can sleep.
Thank you.
I'm glad to stop by 1540 coffee. Watch the traffic.
Okay, thank you. But we have we have to continue with our meeting. Thank you. Yep, appreciate it. Okay, guys, next item on the... Next item on the agenda, we'll go into new business. That's been postponed till September 26. Under new business, a discussion far as the draft of the PLCD. Jonathan, you want to...
Yeah, but I should have probably caught you before, but on your action on item number four on the Still Road, you also have to state your reasons for denial. You can't just not approve the favorable motion. So then you may want to revisit that just quickly to state the motions for denial.
Basically, didn't they do that?
Well, they referred to the staff, and they referred to the comments. Hopefully, that's sufficient.
And the PLCD has gone...
Yeah. I mentioned that it was not in the PLCD also.
Speaking of a zone change, does it... We have this...
On a zone change, you have to give you have to give your reasons for or against.
For denial. Reasons for denial.
Yeah, very much stated.
Okay, if you're comfortable, I'm comfortable.
Yeah.
Okay, going on... Going on to new business. I am... Item A is really a plea to you all to let's get the PLCD done. And I would urge you all to consider... I've gotten written comments from one member of the commission. If we can finalize your comments and also schedule, hopefully, in December, because our regular meeting is not till the very end of the month, at least one meeting where we could have a, you know, a final conversation and discussion on the PLCD so we can we can finalize it with the consultant, and we can also start the 65-day clock running. Because I think we really need to button this up and get it adopted. That's my that's my request, Mr. Chairman. I don't necessarily need an answer tonight, but I would like you to put it on your put your thinking caps on and think if there's a calendar day we could we could come to come to agreement for in September.
All right, we'll we'll throw it out and try to get a special meeting prior to our September 26 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Through you to the director, the 60-day clock, is that for public hearing, public comments?
Say again, sir.
You said after we finalize, then the 60-day clock starts. Is that for...
During this, when we start the 65-day, that's the time for public comment?
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
And engagement.
Thank you.
All right, we'll we'll schedule something before our next meeting. Sure. Commissioner Goff?
Yes, thank you. Just sort of expanding on Commissioner Bolton's question a bit and to, again, through you to through you to the planner, we would have a special meeting, then we would... The consultant would take the output of that special meeting and come back with another draft. When will we see another draft? I guess that's my fundamental question.
Commissioner, my sense is yes, that we would have the special meeting, and as a result of that, we'd have a compendium of the final comments. We'd get the we would have the consultant finalize the draft reflecting those comments, and then we'd send it out for the 65-day public. And as you can see, that drags it out, but I think that's the process we have to do so that you're you all need to be comfortable with the draft that because it's your draft and it's your document when all is said and done, that you're comfortable when you put it out to the public, to both other public agencies, but to the general public in general, that that's a document that you're comfortable with and that you can defend.
And again, through you, Mr. Chair, I agree with that. I think there are some substantive discussions that we need to have, as Commissioner James brought up tonight with housing, questions like that. So we have this meeting, that compendium, the consultant would go back. We would probably, hopefully, optimistically get a draft by the end of September that we could then hopefully give a thumbs up to, and that would start the clock running. So we're looking at a 65-day timeframe there, probably early December. Is that is that your thinking?
Yes, I would...
Thank you.
I would concur.
Thank you.
Item 7B doesn't have a clock running with it, but other than that, the moratorium on the cannabis that you all approve expires on November 1. And again, we need to have a discussion on that. I'm not sure we want to do it at the same meetings, and it may not be as it's probably undoubtedly will not be as extensive. But where the staff is at this point is after considering a bunch of options, and there's lots of changes here and there, we think that the best approach, which is what I'd want some 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 approval tonight if you're willing, that the best approach is in essence create a new section in the zoning regulations that deals with all aspects of cannabis, because it's sort of spread out around the regulations now. But this would deal with retail, it would deal with growth, it would deal with manufacturing, it would deal with transportation. There are all those components now that are can be different uses in different locations related to cannabis. And staff believes that the most appropriate is to create a singular section that puts that all in one place in a coherent manner that's in accordance with what the commission wants in terms of location, distance separations, number of number of facilities of each type, and so forth. We will prepare recommendations for that, but our approach would be give you a brand-new separate section on cannabis to insert into the zoning regulations.
Actually, I like that idea. It's not a bad idea. Any other comments on that?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That's something that we can request tonight?
Sure.
If there's a consensus, we're fine, and it, you know, that's something I think Linda and I would, you know, it should not take us a great deal of time to prepare.
Yeah.
Any objections to that? Okay, John, great idea.
Item C is we've had this conversation on what are the definitions of the types of residence residential developments that are allowed in the PLR and the PEC and relating back to the definition of multifamily in the definitions. And Linda and I have come to the to this point in time, which you may agree with, that it's basically there is no need to change... This is separate from an overall conversation that I know that one commissioner wants to have. There's no need to change the language in the PLR regulations because while the PLR intent says that it's to establish and provide a limited range of multifamily housing, that's a purpose statement. That's not the controlling regulation. The controlling regulation is the permitted use, and the permitted use statement is under three, 3.8, which says residences residences for individuals and families as defined by these regulations. Well, that refers back to all the various definitions of residents in the in the regulations, which would be multifamily, single-family, duplex, and so forth. So I think in terms of the variety of housing that, in fact, has been permitted in PLRs, and in my opinion ought to be permitted in PLRs if you like the PLRs in the first place, that were were fine in the PLR regulations. The reverse exists in the PEC, which is the planned elderly congregate, which was the Dunkster regulation and Seaberry. There, the intent, interestingly, is to provide in a single district, private residential dwelling units restricted to elderly residents, which suggests that it could be any type of dwelling unit. But when you get down to the controlling use, which again is 3.8 in that section, it's multifamily dwelling units. And if you and multifamily dwelling units is specifically defined in the definition section of the regulations as having three or more units in a building. And that's where the rub comes on that. So if that we want to make that, if we want to have additional PECs or we want to have and that's a conversation again for itself, I would recommend that we amend the use section of the PEC to basically be as flexible as the PLR because I'm if if that's what the market is suggesting for those types of developments as as a planner, and I don't have an objection to those developments being multi-single-family, a combination of all types of residences. But the broader question is whether you want to continue those, and I'm aware there are commissioners that have those concerns. But that's where we would be on on the specifics of the issue that had come up in the in the review of the Dunkster PEC. And that's my 10 cents on that. The last thing I have, which is not on the not on the list, if you indulge me, is and I have talked to the to the chairperson, is that a potential developer has that wants to develop a housing, a significant housing development up off of Griffin Road North. That's interestingly enough, is in the other DDD zone in town, was designated way back when. Four residents has asked whether they could make an informal conversation with the commission and have an informal presentation to the commission where that we could have just a conversation with them. It would not be a public hearing. It would be a conversation between you and the developer in terms of what your what your sort of reaction to their proposal is. I think that's a good idea. I think it's a useful process to go for, and I would recommend to the commission that it be receptive to that request.
Are there any objections to that?
Mr. Chair, so it wouldn't be obviously wouldn't be a public hearing, but it would be held at a meeting with other agenda items, or would that be the only agenda item?
It would probably be at a meeting with other agenda items, and we can, you know, we can restrict the time if that's that's an issue.
Yeah.
For that item.
Would we would the public, if they had a question or comment, be able to weigh in or would...
Probably not. It'd be strictly between I think we'd have to be very strict about it's a conversation between the applicant, not even an applicant, the developer and the commission. Obviously, the public can sit and watch and be present, but could not participate.
If if commission members were to, through their comments or questions, give direction to somehow proceed in a certain way, would we be... And we wouldn't be bound until there's an actual vote, but would this individual for for Still Road, their attorney, you know, the statements made that they were following staff comments and even this commission's comments, I think were genuine but kind of presented us and the like as being disingenuous, right? If we were kind of stringing them along. Not me, I was consistent with my objection.
I would like to clarify...
I don't want to be in that position with a conversation.
And you wouldn't be, and I think you're making sure, but I'd now that you bring it up, I'd like to clarify that. The staff met numerous times with the applicant early on, and what we said to them is that if you want to proceed for this type of development you're proposing, the only route that is afforded in the zoning regulations is the PLR. We did not indicate that we supported any specific development at that time and that we would certainly process the PLR. But that what we advised them on is what they when they came in is how would we go about doing this? And that's what we we said. We did not commit to supporting it. We did endorse the fact that that was the route to follow because there was no other route to follow, but we in no ways indicated that we would support the development itself until it got through. And there also was a change in in the directorship during that process. Their initial conversations, Justin was the director at that time. I was present, but Justin was the director. I'm not trying to run anyone under the bus, and Justin was very clear about that as well. So I think, quite frankly, I think the applicant had a slightly different recollection of how those conversations went.
Thank you.
Because I would never do that.
Oh, I know.
And, you know, it's just not I'm not... First of all, I would never leave someone down the primrose path, and secondly, I would never commit to endorsing something till it got further down the road.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think staff is very clear on the direction on the on the text amendments and on talking to the to the potential developer for a conversation. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
On number 7C, in terms of the PEC language, would we consider asking the town staff to present new language?
Well, I think Jonathan just mentioned...
We'd be happy to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, he would modify that.
We will do that.
In addition to the consolidation of the cannabis?
We will do that.
Great.
Jonathan, outside of new business, are there any other staff comments you'd like to make?
None at this time, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
I think Ola has his hand up.
Uh, sure. Linda?
Hmm?
Commissioner Ola?
Yes, this proposed meeting, I think is a I agree with it, but I I just want to my question is this one-off, or is it a method that we can use to that helps us to do our work? Because I gather from the past that I think I proposed something like this in the past, and at that time, it was said to... I think I proposed something like this in the past and at that time it was said to not be in compliance with the, uh, method of, um. The commission's work, so is this something that we can, is this a one-off or is it a method that we can use? On other issues, because there are other issues that require this kind of meeting. Or rather would be helpful, this kind of meeting would be helpful for those other issues.
Okay, are you referring to the PLCD meeting?
No, the meeting that, um, um, Mr. Jonathan had just suggested. Informal meeting with the developer.
The, um, the informal meeting with the, um, with the proposed development?
That is, yes.
Yeah, that's, um, sort of on an as needed basis, a, a number of many, many commissions around the state do that. Um, I don't think we've done it here in a while, but I know it has happened in the past, if you, I mean, if you look at the, um. You look at even the history on Dunkster, there were a lot of upfront informal meetings that happened, um, beforehand, before the actual. Formal application was submitted, so it's, it's, um, I'm not sure I'd call it a one-off, but it's not something that, uh, and, but it's, um. It's not irregular and it's not unusual.
And this was at the request of the applicant?
Right.
Correct, for an FYI?
Mr. Chairperson, I have one other thing that, uh, a fair amount of importance and excitement that Linda reminded me of. We have completed the, um. The, um. Recruitment and review of her replacement as a zoning enforcement officer. And, uh, that individual is now going through the, um. The reformal review process, um, and has indicated a willingness, uh, to come here, so I'm hoping that at the next commission meeting. I will be able to inform you that we have on, on staff, um, Linda's replacement.
Hey, excellent. Sure, Commissioner James?
Um, for the PLR, uh, I know you're talking about the use, but if my memory serves me, um, the town attorney, Crumbie. Andrew Crumbie sent us a note about what's defined as multifamily, right? Um, I'm not seeing it in my email, I may have it in my hard documents, but, um. I do recall that coming across. My attention, um.
I think he was referring to the PEC in that opinion, cause that's what we asked him about, I'm not sure we asked him for an opinion on the PLR. But I stand to be corrected and then we will check on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was Dunkster, I think it was related to Dunkster, the accessory use, I believe.
Yeah, I see that, but I.
Yeah.
I'm remembering something about multifamily, maybe.
Okay, is there any other comments about the commission before we, sure, Commissioner Blint?
Sorry, I just, uh, had a question actually, when we were talking about, um, the need for more housing units in town. Um, whatever happened to the Gab Road apartments at Bloomfield Ave? There's supposed to be two hundred and fifty.
Mr. Butler has indicated that, um. He, um, will be coming, wants to come shortly before the design review board, which would be the first step. Um, we had a, I had a conversation with him, I think now about a month ago, so I'm. I'm, he has indicated that he wanted to come in with that part, um, we also have, um. Four other, um, I'm not going to reveal the sites, um, where we are in preliminary conversations. Uh, with, um, potential developers to develop, um. Multifamily housing, workforce housing, um, and some, um, townhouse housing.
I assume the workforce housing would be more affordable housing?
That's the modern day definition of affordable housing.
Excellent.
Um, sure, Commissioner James? Thank you, Chair, I'm Mr. Chair, um. Because there was also a reference to like wanting, me wanting a conversation about housing, um, I do want to continue to bring that up, when are we going to talk about the zoning? That we have currently that's more exclusionary, um, would want to update that, it was an affordable housing plan. Um, as a suggestion to update our zoning in how, in terms of housing, um, that's in the PLCD as well to make the affordable housing plan updates. Um, specifically, I'm thinking of the minimum lot sizes, we know that minimum lot sizes are rooted in racism, um, and having that in our zoning reduces. Our ability to have a diverse housing stock across town, um, the PLR was supposed to be, it seems, as I, as it reads, one of those areas so that we can have more increased. Um, diverse housing options for people to be able to, uh, get into how owning, housing ownership and such, so. Um, I would like to press that we do have this conversation about updating our zoning, um, and making it more inclusionary as opposed to, as, as opposed to exclusionary.
Commissioner Goff?
Uh, yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, and I, uh, I, I want to echo, uh, Commissioner James and I think. I think several commission members have, uh, know that the, uh, town council has set up an affordable housing trust fund. And if we, if we start acting on inclusionary zoning, I think we can put linkage fees in there. So that when we do have development, it can, it can help fund that, uh, affordable housing trust fund, so. There's a lot of things, uh, that do need to be done, uh, on that, um, I also wanted to make one other comment. Uh, and it reminded me when Commissioner Blint, uh, made a comment a minute ago, um. She made a very interesting comment, uh, when we were discussing the proposal tonight about, uh, delivery trucks. Um, and one question I have, just in terms of the traffic models and the traffic studies, uh, you know, those are always, those are obviously. Models that use a lot of past data and I wonder how much that data has been updated for. The chain, the, the model, you know, the change in model for retail where everyone orders from Amazon Prime and gets three deliveries a day, et cetera. Uh, I wonder how much that's been integrated into those models, that was just a question that, that came up and I, I was, I, I was sort of like Commissioner Millet, I was going to mention that at one point and, uh. It slipped my mind, but that's something we may want to talk about when we, the next time we talk about, uh, traffic, uh, traffic studies, thank you.
Okay, if there's no further comments, Chair entertain the motion. Meeting adjourned. Night off.